Okay, Jason William, are we ready? Okay. I don't see a gavel, but we'll officially call the meeting to order. So, the Planning Commission meeting for October 22nd is called to order. First, we need to do some roll call. Steve Ball is absent. Phoebe Benzinger?
Here.
Ron Carnes?
Here.
David Fishering is absent. Chad Huffman, myself, is here. Delphine?
Here.
And then, Richard Rogers. So, we have five of us. That is a quorum for tonight's event. So, next on the agenda, do we have any additions or deletions from the agenda?
We do not.
Good enough. Okay, well, we are just gonna jump right into it, and we have, I will call, oh, you're right, approval of the minutes. I did jump. Okay. Approval of the minutes from August 27th, 2025. Does anybody want to make any changes, or how do we?
No, I will make a motion to approve as presented.
Any conversation about that? Okay, well, all those in favor of the minutes as presented?
Aye.
Aye. And so, that is unanimous. Okay, so now, let's go ahead and turn things over for the Haynes addition zoning hearing.
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. This is an initial zoning request for the Haynes addition, a pending annexation into the city. The official hearing date for the annexation is set for December 2nd, and just for the public's knowledge, the Planning Commission does make a recommendation of zoning for any annexation, but the actual annexation itself only goes to the city council. This is a 0.59 acre site within the city's urban growth boundary and city sewer and water service areas, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter does border existing city limits. Just for some background on why this is being annexed, the property owners are working through a boundary line adjustment between a property that is in city limits and a property that's outside of city limits. The property being transferred is going from the county property to the city property. Whenever that happens, we do wanna make sure the property that's getting transferred does get annexed, just there's no jurisdictional issues with the property that's partially in the city and partially not, and that could create issues with, you know, any kind of building permits that might happen in the future, whether they're supposed to follow city or county codes, et cetera. With any annexation, the Planning Commission must make a recommendation of a zoning designation. In this instance, the property that is already within city limits is Zoned R6 Medium Density/Manufactured Housing District, and so, it does make sense to zone this annexation the same in order to match. R6 is intended to provide primarily for medium-density development for single-household-attached, triplex, and fourplex manufactured home dwellings, along with certain other compatible land uses. This is the annexation plat itself. This is the property transferring per the boundary line adjustment, and then the little tail at the bottom that you see there is actually a piece of right-of-way that was dedicated, I believe, about six years ago, in anticipation of future growth, and it does make sense to annex that piece as well. This is shown as residential mix density medium in the future land use map, which indicates the areas appropriate for a variety of residential types mixed within the neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, or triplexes. This is within Growth Area 2, which indicates the property has some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. In summary, the property is eligible for annexation. We do have an annexation agreement, and due to its small size, an annexation impact report will not be required. Staff recommends approval of the requested R6 zoning. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at this point? Is the applicant in the house? Come on up. Please state your name and your address, and tell us, tell us more, whatever you'd like to add.
My name is Ethel Brown. I'm the owner's representative. I'm not the actual owner. My work address is 12696-6450 Road in Montrose. And I, I don't have anything really to add. I, I've been working with both the county and the city on this. It's a, it's a property, a boundary adjustment between two brothers is what we're working on, so one brother's just giving another brother a little more backyard, if you will. And the part that's going to the brother is in the county, so that's why we're here for the annexation to the city. It's something that I discussed with William prior to even moving forward with this boundary line adjustment. We wanted to make sure everything was done correctly.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? I'll, I'll throw one general question. Do you have any idea of what the plans are for this particular part of the property?
It's, he's been using it for his backyard, and it was an agreement they made with the father who's passed away to, to allow the, one of the brothers to have just a little bit bigger piece of property on paper legally. They've been, they've been sharing the property for a while. And, you know, as we age, we just wanna make sure every, all our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed. The, the brother that's being annexed into the city has two sons, and he just wants to make sure that, you know, when he passes, he can actually give the whole part to his sons, and there won't be, you know, fight between cousins and all that. So, we're just trying to do what's right between the brothers.
Great, thank you. You can go ahead and have a seat.
Okay.
And don't, don't leave yet, though, because you never know if we're gonna have any additional questions for you. So, we will go ahead and open up the public comment period for this particular agenda item. There will be an individual public comment period for each individual item on our agenda. So, does anybody want to make a statement about this particular item tonight? And then, once we close the public session, that's your last opportunity, or you don't, you don't have any more opportunity, I guess is a better way to phrase it, on this one. So, okay, we're gonna go ahead and officially close the public comment period on this particular agenda item, and so, it goes back to the conversation amongst us. Anybody have any comments? So, what they're all whispering to me, not really whispering, but just everybody's making small comments, the yes, it sounds very straightforward, and, I mean, the simple idea is that the major property is already R6, and so, this one little sliver, it does make sense, is they're cleaning up some boundary items that would also be zoned in a similar fashion with the big portion of the land that is there. So, that would be my two cents. Also, is there a, do we have a motion on the subject?
I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of the initial zoning request of R6 Medium Density/Manufactured Housing District. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
Okay. So, Richard seconded that motion. Is there any additional comments that we, that anybody would like to make on the motion? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? And so, it passes unanimously. Okay, our next agenda item, William.
Okay, so, this is a request for a rezone, and this is basically right next door to the previous item, 126586450 Road. This is about 1.1 acres in size, and is currently Zoned MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District. This is a request to rezone the property to R6 Medium Density/Manufactured Housing District. According to the rezone criteria, amendments to the official zoning map shall be allowed only upon findings as follows: The amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in substantial conformity with the master plan, or the existing zoning is erroneous, or conditions in the area affected or adjacent areas have changed materially since the area was last zoned. The R6 zoning overall is, is actually a lower density than what the current MHR zoning would allow in theory, as MHR would in theory, in theory allow for a mobile home park. However, the property owner has indicated that she would like to build an accessory dwelling unit, and MHR is actually the only zoning district in Montrose that does not allow for ADUs in any form. The property is adjacent to other R6 zoning, as well as MHR zoning across the street. This is shown as residential mix density medium in the future land use map, indicating it's appropriate for a variety of residential types, ranging from single-family to triplexes or townhomes. Staff does find that the rezone request meets the rezone criteria, and is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, and is compatible with the surrounding area. Staff recommends approval of the rezone request to R6 Medium Density/Manufactured Housing District. And once again, that concludes my presentation. The applicant is also here, if you have any questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, applicant, come on up, please, and state your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Faith Stoy, 126586450 Road.
Go ahead, tell us more about, what can he add to the story?
Well, if you want it short, I've lived on the land for 42 years. I love my neighbors. Todd Haynes is one of them that was up before, and I would like to continue to stay there, but I had a bout with some back issues and sciatic issues, and found out that you can become immobile very quickly. And I'm fine now, but I would like my granddaughter and her husband, and new great-grandbaby, to live in my mobile home, and I would like to just either start from scratch, stick-built a little 400 or 500 foot, square foot, little home for me at the back. It'd be the northeast corner, and there's a shop there between my place and the, or that spot and the fence. Literally, no one will know I'm there, except the one neighbor in the winter, when the leaves are off the tree, she might be able to see me. But I have asked all my neighbors, you know, this is what I'd like to do, do you have any objections? What are your feelings? And they're all for it, and I'm very close with my neighbors. My husband died almost two years ago, and so, life has not been the same. And I'm just trying to simplify, become a minimalist. It's wonderful. And my granddaughter and her husband would like to help me age gracefully on the land and be able to live out the rest of my days. I'm just going on Medicare on November 1st, so I got a ways to go. But I just realized that having a home with no stairs, you know, just things like that, making sure a walker can get around the, I just wanna plan ahead for the next journey of my life, and I really desire to stay where I'm at, because I would be really sad to leave all my neighbors. So, I appreciate your time.
No problem. We're sorry for the loss of your husband a few years ago. That does sound like a nice situation with a lot of privacy, but you're still close to town.
Yeah, yes.
So, any additional questions? We have, were the applicant?
I think it's refreshing what you said, like, you love your neighbors. I mean, people, a lot of times come here, like, I don't like what they're doing, this, that, and the other, so, yeah.
Oh, no.
Way to go, Faith.
And plus, it's an investment for your granddaughter. I don't know, you don't have to tell us what the long-term plan is, but it's an investment. Right, right, yeah. Yeah, they've just taken over all the responsibilities of taxes, insurance, everything on the mobile home, and, you know, that'll be the plan, and, and they're making improvements, they wanna put up, you know, a better fence, and so, it's gonna look really nice.
That's great.
So, we're making betterment out of all of this, so.
Okay, go ahead and have a seat.
I was gonna bring my great-granddaughter, but I figured that wasn't fair. That was dirty pull.
So, opening up a public comment period on this particular agenda item, does anybody wanna speak? Okay, sir, come on up.
I don't need to, sir.
Nope, nope. So, ultimately, you're gonna come on up, you're gonna have three minutes, you are gonna need to tell us your name and your address, and that way, it's officially part of the record of who spoke, and et cetera, so, and we wanna be able to, we're also being broadcast, and so, this way, talking to the microphone, our people at home can, can participate and understand what's going on, so. So, name and address, please.
I'm WD Hess. I live on Sunnyside Road. Parenthetically, those of you who will understand, no relation to Megan Hess.
Okay.
My comment is, family is important, neighbors are important. I'm with her.
That's a nice comment, sir. Thank you. Does anybody else wanna make a comment? Otherwise, okay, I'm closing the public comment period for this particular agenda item, and any discussion amongst our commission? Okay, is there anybody who wants to give a, a motion?
I will for you. I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of the rezone request of 126586450 Road to R6 Medium Density/Manufactured Housing District. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay, if we have a second?
Yes, I second.
There we go. And so, all those in, oh, sorry, any discussion about the motion? Nope? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, so, it's unanimous, and the motion passes. So, thank you so much for being here. Okay, Will, you're in the hot seat again. Let's, take us to our next agenda item.
Yes, thank you again. This next item is a proposed rezone of Lot 1 of the Parsons Minor subdivision, which is addressed as 1720 Niagara Road. This is a 1.63 acre site, currently zoned as R4 High Density District. The applicant is seeking a rezone to B2 Highway Commercial District. Same rezone criteria as before, the amendment shall not be adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment shall be in substantial conformity with the master plan, or the existing zoning is erroneous, or conditions in the area have changed materially since the area was last zoned. Just to give some background, this property was originally annexed and zoned as part of the Moore Addition in 1978. The area across the street was annexed in 1968, and the area to the west, which is where St. Mary's Church and Vista Charter School are, that was annexed in 1980. The B2 Highway Commercial District is intended to provide for businesses oriented towards serving the motoring public, encouraging the convenient exchange of goods and services along the major thoroughfares of the city. The property is adjacent to other properties zoned B2, as well as properties zoned R4 High Density District. B2 would allow for some commercial uses or office uses. It would also allow for residential uses, though it would be at a lower density than what would currently be allowed for this property, and so, under the current zoning, the property could, in theory, have up to 39 units as apartment building on the property. If the rezone was approved, that number would be reduced to 24 units. Also, perhaps just to address some concerns that I had heard previously, I believe some people were under the impression that this is being done as part of another access to Les Schwab around the corner. This does not have anything to do with Les Schwab. The Catholic Church property would be in the way of any potential access there, so, one point there, and then, also, this is just a zoning hearing, there is no proposed development that we're discussing tonight. This is shown as residential mix density high on the future land use map, indicating the area is primarily intended for attached buildings on individual lots such as townhomes or multifamily structures such as apartment buildings or condos. Staff does find that the rezone request is compatible with the existing uses in the area, and that conditions in the surrounding area have changed materially since the area was, since the property was originally zoned. Staff does recommend approval of the rezone request, and once again, we do have the applicant with us here, and we are here to answer questions.
Do we have any questions for staff at this point? Okay, let's go ahead and have the applicant step, step forward, please, and provide a name and address. Good evening.
I'm not the applicant, I'm, I'm representing the applicant. My name is David Keenhold. I reside at 3400 Valley Way in Montrose, and Jim Brown is a longtime client of mine, friend, he is the owner of the property. He was the original, he was born in the farmhouse that sits there today, and he's gotta move on. He, his hearing is not real good, so he couldn't come to the meeting, and so, I'm here to answer any questions he might have. The zoning, we think, is in compliance with the area, and as Will said, it's not, it's a lesser density in terms of residential, but it does allow for office space and so on, and there's all kinds of offices in the area around him, and so on and so forth, so, if you've driven by, you see that. It's, it's not really a predominantly residential area, but it's possible that it could be, the land could be used for residential area.
So, David, no plans, does he have, to do anything on that, or just?
No, he's just, he can't take care of it anymore. The house has an apartment upstairs, and he rents that out, and it's more of a move-on thing for him, and there's nothing, he's not, at this point, not a developer. The land that he originally sold has been, in the area, has been developed, it's Sunrise Creek subdivision and so on, and that, and he took an active part in that 20 or 30 years ago, but he just wants to sell out and get something, a little, simplify his life a little bit.
And the trees are a lot of work.
Huh?
Those big trees are a lot of work.
Yeah.
No more questions? Okay, sir, go ahead and have a seat, and we will open the public comment period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, opening public comment period on this agenda item, does anybody have a statement they'd like to make concerning this agenda? This, this item. No comments. Okay, last chance, and I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment period on this agenda So, back to discussion amongst the group.
Makes a lot of sense where it's located, to me, so, I have no questions.
In what way does it make sense? Tell, elaborate your words, elaborate your thoughts.
I think we're growing in, Montrose loves to expand and attract businesses, and if we could build good office areas, and, I mean, we've got a lot of dentists on that road, but we could have more medical services and areas that wear a belt-to-suit would really be a good fit, and, so, I believe that you're, you're what, 100 feet, not even from Townsend? So, the location itself is very suited for this, in my opinion.
That's a great description, thank you.
And I have to say, when I read it at home, it did not make sense to me, because it's there between the church and, oh, both churches, kinda, and Vista, so, it's like, you know, I, I think we have to be, and I'm for it, I'm not saying, I just, we have to be cognizant when we make a zoning change, that it's not based on what's, may or may not happen today, so you have to look ahead of it. With that, with what David said, it makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, really, what else is gonna be there? So, yeah, but I will say that at the beginning, I'm like, really? I mean, do we really wanna change that to business zone? But I guess we do. I mean, I'm all for it, but I appreciate that presentation and having that, so, thanks.
Gentlemen, do you have any comments? Okay. Will, just brief, brief the audience, and just review, what is the notice, notice process associated with how, the simple, simple question I'm really getting to is, how many people are notified? Would the churches have been notified in this situation, along with, tell me about the signage in front of the, of the property, so, so, just notifying the churches, and thus their congregation, and thus, if they were interested, they had an opportunity to be here today?
Yeah, so, I mean, notify, public notice takes three forms, and they apply to every application, every land use application, not just this one, but, one, there is a physical sign located on the property, there is a, an ad placed in the newspaper, and then, letters to the property owners on record, all property owners within 300 feet of the property are sent a letter. And so, that would include the churches on either side, the properties across the street, anything within 300 feet.
So, I mean, I'm in agreement with you that it makes sense to get it done. I am surprised that nobody from the church was interested to be here, but there's already a lot of office-related zoning there, nearby, and it's a busy, busy street, it's very logical associated with it being considered for additional business-oriented locations. So, it's, it's an easy yes, and especially with there nobody being here, to give any indication of a no, then, then I would always have to support it under the, the logic scenario. So, is there any motion associated with this item?
I'd like to make a motion, and the red paper. I hereby make a motion to recommend approval of the rezone request, Lot 1 of the Parsons subdivision to B2 Highway Commercial District. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented, and at this hearing, add in the staff report.
Is that the right motion? It was? It was? Okay, yeah, okay.
And I second.
I'm sorry, we were, too many motions going on. So, we have a first, and we have a second. Delphine seconded the motion. Any discussion on the motion at hand? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening, although, don't feel like you have to run away. Okay, I think we are down to our last agenda item. Delphine.
Okay, so, this is a subdivision application located on Outlet 3 of Woods Crossing subdivision, filing number 2, which is at the southwest corner of Sunnyside Road and Hill Street. This is a 14.73 acre site, which is Zoned R3A Medium High Density District. This is an amendment to a previously approved subdivision plan, which proposes 79 residential lots, along with associated rights of way and easements. This is the subdivision process that any major subdivision must go through. The sketch plan, which is an informal hearing, was done for Woods Crossing in 2021. A preliminary plat is a document that allows the developer to begin infrastructure improvements on the property, and there is actually already an approved preliminary plat associated with Woods Crossing, the most recent one from 2023. Once infrastructure improvements are in place, the developer does need to come back with a final plat to formally create lots. With any subdivision, the proposal should be consistent with the master plan, city subdivision, and zoning regulations, and are also reviewed per the relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, and other hazards and physical characteristics, the availability of water, sewer, stormwater drainage, the compatibility with the natural environment and unique features, adjacent streets and traffic flow, fire, police, and other emergency, emergency services, and the impacts on area schools. This property is shown as residential mix density medium, indicating a variety of residential types are appropriate, ranging from single-family detached to townhomes. The R3A Medium High Density District is intended to provide for an area which is suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences, along with certain other compatible land uses. The property is adjacent to a property Zoned R2 Low Density District, R3 Medium Density District, R3A Medium High Density District, and properties outside of city limits. This slide I wanted to show, just shows the already-approved preliminary plat, just to highlight what is being changed with this proposal. We are only talking about the west side of Hill Street tonight, but the, the plat, as shown here, that's already been approved, allows for 44 residential lots along what would become Peregrine, Peregrine Loop and Goshawk Street, and that is not being changed with this application. The amendment is only to the proposed townhomes at the northern end of the property, and this would allow for 35 townhome units. The current, current existing preliminary plat allows for 28 townhome units, and so, looking at it overall, the existing plat that has already been approved shows 72 units overall on this property, and that is not up for discussion tonight. This amendment would increase that number to 79 units. And also, just worth noting, the R3A zoning does allow for multifamily and townhomes as a use by right, and so, the applicant does not need approval during this hearing in order to increase the number of the townhome units. This hearing is just regarding the ability to subdivide those units and make them individually conveyable. This is the actual plat that we are discussing tonight. This first, first page primarily shows the signature lines and certificates, and this is the plat itself. Again, no changes to the southern portion of the property, this plat just shows an increase in the number of townhome lots at the northern end, along those cul-de-sacs. And finally, this is a phasing plan for the proposed subdivision, which would start on the eastern end and move west. Staff does find that the preliminary plat is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan, it is in compliance with the R3A Medium High Density zoning district. Staff recommends the conditional approval of the Woods Crossing subdivision amended preliminary plat 2, with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats. And once again, we're here for questions, and the applicant is with us. And once again, we're here for questions and the applicant is with us as well.
Anybody have questions for staff at this point? I will jump in. Tell us our connections to our trails systems. Is there any connection? Did we lose any connections? Was any change at all associated with the connections? Associated with the trails?
There's no change associated with this preliminary plat. I don't recall what the previous preliminary plat showed for trail connections. That being said, again, this is strictly a, a proposed increase in the number of townhome units. The rest of the plat isn't being changed.
And that's why I was just trying to make sure is we didn't lose something beneficial in the efforts of gaining more units. So you don't think we lost any trails?
So is it an architectural move? Like, because we're talking only seven units difference, correct? So I'm just wondering where it came from. It's so subtle and so little.
Well, we'll go ahead and bring up the applicant and you can tell us more. Please state your name and address for the record. Good to see you back.
Matt Miles, 1282 West Oak Grove Road, Montrose. It's, the reason we, we're adjusting the preliminary plat is just a cleaner presentation for the builder. We did add some lot lines so that we can individually convey these units rather than have duplexes or sixplexes, I think, but we're just asking for a cleanup. I don't, you know, I can't really get into the idiosyncrasies of it. It was just more of the builder-driven.
Any questions for the applicant at this point? So are the new additional lots part of that? If you can show us the map real quick. Are they part of the townhouses? Is that where you're suspecting those new additional units are located?
Yeah, so along what's shown is Barnell Court, Peregrine Court and then Track J on the western end. Those are where the increased number of townhome units are proposed. All of the, kind of what are shown as single-family lots, that is unchanged from the already approved preliminary plat.
Okay.
You don't have a exhibit of the existing preliminary plat, do you, Will?
It's a lot that's just skinnier.
Yeah, it's a little skinnier or tighter, however you want to phrase it. With those top townhouses. Okay, that's a good description. Okay, Mr. Miles, go ahead and have a seat and we will open public comment period and maybe bring you back. Okay, anybody wish to speak? Go ahead and step on up and state your name. Yep, you are first. Okay, go ahead and address your comments to us if you would, please. Mr. Hess? Yeah, you'll go ahead and address your comments to us. And we can always ask the applicant questions if, if we deem it appropriate.
Yes. See, I'm alone tonight, so, got this in the, in the city of Montrose, of course. See the logo, right? It says, sir, the city of Montrose planning commission will hold a public hearing to consider the Woods Crossing, so on, so on, right? I'm wondering what it is the public was supposed to consider? It is an action verb?
So ultimately, and Sharon, can we go ahead and get our timer started? So ultimately, you're going to get, you're going to have three minutes to present, to ask us as many questions as you want. And then we're going to go through those questions and, and maybe talk to Scott, the engineer, to get some additional information. We're going to ask Williams some additional information. And, and we're going to kind of pick and choose associated which of the questions or all the questions, we're going to go ahead and give straight to the applicant. But just tell us, what are you, what is your question, sir? Or if you just have a general comment, go ahead and just give us your general comment.
I'm wondering, since I got this letter and it's some neighbors also, what the public is supposed to consider about this?
I think the letter's simply to inform you that there is a plat that's going to be considered during this meeting. And as you've heard from Will, ultimately, there's somewhat additional units being.
I may have missed some of what he said, but construction has been going on for three-plus weeks already.
Okay.
So it seems a dichotomy to ask why we are allowed to consider anything, which, because the Peregrine Road has already been, construction on it has already begun.
Good, okay, we'll, we'll, we'll talk further about that. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir, one more, and maybe from you, sir, on the plat.
Please address your comments. Sir, please address your comments to us and we will go ahead and get you some information.
I'd like to see the plat again, please.
Okay, do you have a question or?
Yes, I have a question about it. Yes, please.
We can't show the plat as we have a timer up, which is the issue here. I wouldn't have a, a problem. Is, would this be the last question you have, sir?
Pardon?
Was, is, would this be the last question you have?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're happy to show the plat in that case.
It says not a part, is that where the catch pod is?
You need to speak into the microphone so the cameras can get your comments.
Okay, go ahead and we head back up to the podium so that it's officially part of the record. What was your question?
I'm asking about those lots that appear to be townhome lots along Tinman's on the northwest corner.
So top left-hand corner, are those lots or are they retention pond? Is that what I'm hearing your question to be?
No, it's all right. Thank you for your time.
Oh, no, no, I, I just want to make sure I understand your question, sir. Okay. Anybody else who's got any questions? Okay, public comments?
Yeah, just a quick, easy question. Hi, I'm Jan Barriger at 3342 Kestrel Loop.
Okay, wonderful, go ahead, Jan.
And my question is, I'm relatively new there, but I was just trying to look at that and figure out where Kestrel Loop is on that diagram.
Okay, do you have a question related to that?
I just want to know where Kestrel Loop is in Woods Crossing. And I wasn't able to look at that, trying to, you know, figure that out.
Sounds good.
So just if somebody could point out.
We'll make sure that Will points that out.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the public environment who wants to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, I'm closing the, the public comment portion of our meeting for tonight. Will, let's talk about, oh no, I forgot the name. Kessler, Kessler Loop.
It's Castro.
So Kestrel Loop was already dedicated, so that's why it's not shown specifically on this plat.
It's north of it.
Kestrel Loop is this. Correct.
Can you scroll down? Scott, tell us about the retention ponds, just because. Please. Whether from this map or from the other preliminary.
Yeah, this, this one's great. So yeah, the, this plat had not a part. So when they dedicated the original, so if you remember, the Woods Crossing plat was like 2021 or so of the entire subdivision. When they did that, to get some of the portions that they were building at the time, to get some of those plats finalized, they had to dedicate the ponds because those, those areas were reliant on those ponds. And so those ponds were previously dedicated, so once, previously dedicated, they don't dedicate them again. And so that's why it's not part of this plat, because that was already taken care of as a previous platting action. So this is creating the new stuff that was newly constructed. And as far as the question about construction, so because that, that whole area was previously approved under a previous preliminary plat, they've started, the work that's undergoing out there right now is under that original plat. And so when they get into these areas, you know, they, they don't have an approved plat yet for those utilities. And so that comes, you know, following approval of this, they can then go into those areas and get, work towards getting final plats on those townhome little cul-de-sacs there. But they're legitimately working on previously approved plans and those, again, those portions of the infrastructure within those reaches and those roads, none of that's changed at all with this plat. So they're, they're operating under the previous at this time.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, for the commission, any further conversation or questions for Scott, Will or the applicant? Ultimately, they were townhouses before, they're still a connected townhouse now. I don't see any dramatic difference. Yes, they are skinnier, but that's the point of the market, is the people who buy them can make that decision if they're comfortable. I'm not, because they were previously platted, no, I'm not going to go down the truck road again. But again, those folks who are buying can decide if it's too skinny or too small compared to what they're interested in. So let the market decide. The neighborhood is not dramatically changed by those nine units, et cetera, from my perspective. So is there a motion associated with this particular agenda item?
I'll use the right page. I hereby make a motion to recommend city council approval of the preliminary plat application with the following conditions. The approval of this preliminary plat is expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addresses all of the staff's concern prior to the execution of the final plat. City staff is not authorized by the, this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied. The request meets the code criteria based on evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and in the staff report.
Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all time for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. So I think that brings us to the end of our meeting. Let's ask the usual question, are we going to have a meeting in two weeks?
I believe we will. I think it works out that it's actually three weeks, but we will have a meeting most likely. We will let you know. But I don't have any other business.
I'll just mention, we've got the American Planning Association Western Slope Conference. That start, actually started today. I was able to travel around with a group of folks to show them the CASA project off the bypass, which was really exciting. I think that's really notable across the state, if not the country, as well as the new unhoused facility up in the city of Delta. So did that, but also we've got two days of that coming on. I know you, a couple of you are attending, so look forward to seeing you. I've got a couple of presentations on Friday, so feel free to not attend those if you don't want to. Aside from that, also on a personal note, I am expecting a baby here in about a week to two weeks. So you will probably be just running with Will Reese here for at least the time being. And that's all I got, so.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
That's exciting.
And we're in good hands with Will, so no stress. Okay.
I want to encourage you to do more of these. I can't make it the next couple of days, I'm out of town, but I love that you put those together and that, I think it raises awareness and it really just makes us all better. So I appreciate you doing it, I wish I could come.
Sure.
Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment? There we go. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we're adjourned. And we're adjourned.